All right, we're gonna resume from a recess. We're gonna go into land use matters. We have item 20 to rezone approximately 23 acres located on Veterans Parkway. The planning department. Matthew.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland, and good evening, Mayor McFarland and members of council. Our first public hearing tonight is regarding a rezoning on the north side of Veterans Parkway. It's west of Barfield Road. This is formerly part of the Claire Vander Scaff's Rivers Edge development, which never materialized, owned by Mr. Stan Vought. David Alcorn has submitted a rezoning request for the property. It's currently zoned RS-10, single-family residential district with minimum lot sizes of 10,000 square feet. And he's requested a rezoning to PRD, Planned Residential District, for a development called Veterans Cove. Veterans Cove is proposed to consist of 95 single-family attached residential units. And Mr. Alcorn has compared it to a development that Old South has built off of St. Andrews Drive called Bell Haven Cove. So there will be for-sale units created by horizontal property regime. Mr. Nathan Nelson will come up in just a moment to give a brief presentation, brief PowerPoint presentation. I did want to touch on the 2035 comprehensive plan, though. It recommends for this property suburban residential land use character. And suburban residential is to break it down as single-family residential attached and detached units with a maximum density of 3.54 dwelling units per acre. This is really a relatively low-density, single-family attached development. It's at 4.17 dwelling units per acre. So it's just a small amount over the recommended density of 3.54 dwelling units per acre. Another piece of information, we held a neighborhood meeting on the request on August 12, 2019, and it was attended by about 10 to 15 neighbors. And then the planning commission did recommend approval of this rezoning request. Be happy to answer any questions. And if you don't have any questions, it's me right now. I'd like to invite Mr. Nathan Nelson with Civil Infrastructure Associates to come to the podium and give you a brief PowerPoint presentation.
Good evening, council. Again, my name is Nathan Nelson. I'm with Civil Infrastructure Associates here in Murfreesboro, Tennessee. And we're here to present Veterans Cove. Let's see. Apologize. So again, we are requesting a rezoning from RS-10 to Planned Residential District. To know where you're at, the site is located on Veterans Parkway. And if you are coming off of I-24 and take Church Street south to Veterans Parkway, take a ride on Veterans Parkway, about two miles, the site will be on the right. Now, again, just to restate, Veterans Cove is 95 single-family attached homes on 22.8 acres, 22 buildings overall. Each unit will be two or three-bedroom. Units will range between 1,600 to 2,500 square feet, one to two stories. There'll be two-car, front-facing garages. And each driveway will have two spaces available for additional parking. So four spaces per unit would be available. There's also 27 additional guest parking spaces throughout the development. Of course, again, overall density is about 4.17. There's about 58% of open space allotted in this. Each unit will be available for purchase, and the targeted demographic is for the 55-years or older community. Now, the project would be phased with the initial phase, including the 55 units. Amenities would include a pavilion and a Veterans Memorial and a flagpole, portion of a walking trail that will continue throughout the development. Of course, the mail kiosk will have connections to Veterans Parkway and Beaver Lane. There will also be a stub road, West Ridge Drive, which will be completed as part of the Rivers Edge development, which I think is currently in design and planning. Phase two will be the remaining 40 units. The amenities will include a dog park and will complete the walking trail. Additional roadway connections will be at Fire Rock Drive to the north and Suzanne Drive to the east. The overall look of the buildings will be very similar to the design at Bell Haven Cove, which is located off St. Andrews Drive. You can see, the pictures you see here are at Bell Haven Cove. The building materials will be masonry on all four sides. The primary building material being fiber cement board. Now, again, to show you where the amenities would be located on-site, you'll have the pavilion near the main entrance of the subdivision off of Veterans Cove. Next, you'll have the flagpole be there, right next to the mail kiosk. Again, in phase two, you'll have the dog park, which will be nestled in the corner of the property in green space, and it'll be fenced. And you'll also have a walking trail, which will connect multiple locations of the property. So the 2035 future land use map does is for suburban residential and single-family attached dwellings are generally consistent with the area. There's multiple surrounding neighborhoods with Southwood Estates to the east, River Downs Annex to the north, Rivers Edge to the northwest, Parkwood Estates to the west, Valley View across the street, across Veterans Parkway, and then cottages at Snell Cove, which is a planned unit district that is, was recently approved this year.
Can I stop you right there just a minute? Will you back up one slide?
Sure.
That RM property, what is it? RM what?
Which?
Any of it? All three?
It's county zoning. So all the RM properties are county zoning. The RS-10s are city property, the PUD is city property, our property, of course, is city.
There's no dis-
Mr. Lance, that RM is the county zoning. It stands for residential medium density as opposed to residential multi-family.
Yeah, gotcha. All right, yep, thank you. Yep.
And while he's already interrupted, I'll go ahead and interrupt you as well. I think, and this came up in the planning commission yesterday, the homeowners association or we need to come up with a plan of how we're going to address dog grinds and bark parks because it's gotten to be an amenity in just about every project that we're approving now. And I don't know if you guys have thought about it, but you know, what's to prevent me from going and picking up a pit bull and carrying it and saying, "I'm gonna keep it out there in my pen." Well, it's not in my personal pen, but there's nothing that really prohibits you from doing that. So this is something we need to probably think a little bit beyond and say, "There needs to be posted operating hours on these dog parks," or "There needs to be a limit as to how long you can use the bark park." Or I think there's a little more information that we need to pursue than just to say we're building a bark park because I think there's more information that we need based on what the potential of what could happen is out there. And I'm not picking on you, but it's just your point. You pointed that out, and yesterday we had had a discussion about it, and I think maybe the homeowners association could handle it or something like that. But there do need to be some restrictions on these things other than just saying, "Hey, we've got a fenced-in area."
Continuing on, so again, just to finish out the roadway connectivity, they'll have multiple means of ingress and egress from the site. Of course, the main one being Veterans Parkway. Once the site is fully built out, you'll have a secondary access to Veterans Parkway via Suzanne and Greenview Drive. You'll also have connections at Beaver Lane and Fire Rock Drive to the north, which will have connections to Barfield Road via River Downs Boulevard. And the final connection would be West Ridge, which will be connected as part of the Rivers Edge subdivision, which would then allow for connectivity directly to Casey Lane through the Rivers Edge subdivision. And believe, David, did you have any comments?
Mayor and council, I'll keep it to two minutes. I'm David Alcorn with Alcorn Properties. Thank you for looking at this project. We contracted on it over a year and a half ago, and we've been working on it for a while. And you can see that the challenges that the, with the waterway creek running through it created, the density was, of the RS-10 was kind of put together back in '08 after some changes of ownership throughout that whole area. And it just kind of mirrored what was their best, but without a plan involved. What we've done here is I worked diligently to see what would best fit in this area. And as the map showed, all the RS-10 and all the single-family, just family homes in the area, there's a need for this demographic. And I know the screen said 55-plus. It's not a 55-plus community. It's an empty nester style, a lot of main-level living, two-bedroom plans, three-bedroom plans. But it is identical to what was successfully done on Bell Haven Cove. We've also taken that stream area and I think made it a pretty neat amenity for this neighborhood. And there's also the pavilion, which is not our traditional pavilion. It's an upgraded gathering spot pavilion and also a nice focal point at the beginning of the subdivision. And being on Veterans, called Veterans Cove, to our demographic and all with the flagpole monument area will also be a nice look. Now, all these streets are public streets, not private streets. There'll be sidewalks throughout. There is that dog park, which maybe after Councilman Smotherman's comment, we can rent it out as kennels for the HOA or do away with it. But I do agree that HOA can create some governing laws for that. I think it fits great in with this area. And again, we would, looking at the density, if we looked at the 2035 plan, I think 81 was the number. Where we're at is 95, but with a more specific plan than straight zoning. Thank you for looking at it. If you have any questions.
Mr. Huddleston, is this the property that we looked at a couple of years ago for overall creek? Okay, I thought it was. All right, thank you, Mr. Alcorn. All right, anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request, please come to the podium.
Something just occurred to me as I was sitting there that I don't live in the city.
That's okay.
I don't know if I'm allowed to come up here and talk or not, but-
No, you absolutely are.
We own this lot, my wife here, Sarah and I, we own this lot right here. And at the meeting we had at the Nature Center, is that what that is? Some of the residents brought up some concerns about water and rain and discharge and everything. And I think our primary concern is we have an area of water that ponds at this part of the property now. And we just had some concerns about whether if they build, you know, a line of trees or whatever there to separate the properties, if that's gonna cause more rainwater to collect in that area. And then somebody at the meeting also brought up, I guess it's been in the news not too many months ago, that there was some subdivision that had some significant flooding that, in theory, wasn't supposed to happen because the city had approved and said, "We've studied it, and we know that this isn't gonna happen," and it ended up happening. And so, does that ring some bells with some people? Did I just dream that?
I think you're talking about Royal Glen that was in the county that had the flooding problem that was not anticipated.
Yeah, it was on St. Andrew, like, yeah.
Oh, that's Kimbrough Road.
Yeah, Kimbrough Road, that's what it is.
That was just the entry.
Yeah, the entrance, okay. Perfect.
So our just general concern was just that we wanted to make sure that, you know, the proper study or whatever has to be done so that there isn't a drainage issue. And I think some of the people that live over on this side of the development had some similar concerns. So that's, we just wanted to make sure that, you know, that was all taken into account.
Can I also get your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry. Jackie Winters, and it's 1310 Veterans.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Winters.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak for or against? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public here. Mr. Huddleston, do you mind going through the process of everything that they'll have to go through to make sure?
Be glad to do that, mayor. Good evening, mayor, members of council. Sam Huddleston with Development Services. I think the comment about the Kimbrough Woods and St. Andrews Drive area is an area of known flooding. We're studying that right now in the midst of a FEMA flood study update, which will allow us to upgrade the drainage system through there. So I wouldn't say that the event that happened there in February wasn't expected. In fact, it's happened several times before, and we're doing our best to try to fix that. Mr. Alcorn's hired certainly a competent civil engineering firm to study this area. And our stormwater management ordinance would also require that they pay particular attention to the drainage patterns and conditions there. We're certainly always interested in the potential for impacts on adjacent neighbors when it comes to drainage, and our staff's trained to take a very close look at that. I also noted that Mr. Nelson was making notes about the comments of this resident, and so we'll take those into consideration if this plan's approved and when it comes time for us to review the actual construction plans. I'd be glad to answer other questions for you if you have any.
So I guess, do you feel confident that, based on the engineering plan and the process that it's gonna have to go through, that we can make sure that we're not going to be damaged? When I say "we," that the developer's not gonna be damaging their neighbors?
Yes, and we pointed out our knowledge of this system as well, and so the design team's done a good bit of work already to understand the drainage, existing drainage conditions and drainage limitations there.
Okay. Councilmembers, any other questions?
I've got a comment that I just think we need to make sure we all understand. And it's really kind of a bigger-picture comment, but it certainly applies to this. The sewer allocation that we've just recently done, I want to make sure that we all know that, you know, I think we all understand we're trying to get to 3.8 units on average. That accounts for this piece of property being RS-10. It actually accounts for 45% of the property that we have zoned in this city to be three units per acre or less. So every time we take a piece of property and say, "Well, it doesn't, it's only 40 units, we're, you know, we're only going from 55 to 95," or like what we did out at Asbury Lane, whatever that number was, 30 to 55 or whatever, every time we do that, we gotta find a piece of property now that's 23 acres, that when they come in and ask us to annex it or zone it or whatever, that they only get two units per acre to match up with this one to get to 3.8, or to get to the three, I'm sorry, to get to the three units per acre for, you know, basically RS-10 or RS-15-type zoning. As you know, we only built 50 doors in this town out of the last 4,450 of them were built on RS-15 lots. Okay? That ain't 45%. So, you know, sooner or later, we gotta make a decision if we're gonna try to get this number of 3.8 or not. This one has water all over it. I'm struggling, you know, the reality of this is, this is just cramming more into a smaller space. Is that really for the betterment of the city? I don't know. I mean, I, do I think 40 houses or units is gonna kill everything? Well, no, but I think we said the same thing, the last three zonings that, you know, that's now we're gonna culminate into an extra 200. So sooner or later, we gotta have some properties zoned at two units per acre if we keep doing this. I'm just, I don't know what the plan is, but I don't know if it's tonight's the time to talk about it after we've been racking our brains on so much heavy-duty stuff, but I'm ready to start addressing what has to be addressed.
So what was the recommendation from planning and staff on this one?
It looked like the planning commission approved it. I didn't look at staff, I mean-
The planning commission did recommend approval after a public hearing on November 6th.
Does staff think it's the best idea for this piece of property?
Do I think it's the best idea for the property?
Yeah, I mean, you know, look.
I don't-
Do we need to get it at 3.8, or do we not? I mean, I guess, and maybe that's a daring question, I don't know, but-
They're at 4.17, so it's slightly above the 3.8.
We gotta have 45% at three.
I think I might just kind of make a comment, too, that I do think, like all things that we change in the discussions that we have openly, those things work their way through the planning commission, and I think what you're talking about naturally will even more so work its way through the planning commission. I think we may have just recently adopted the sewer allocation, and I'm losing track of time, so maybe that was three weeks ago, six weeks ago, I can't remember, but-
Two?
Yeah. All I can think about is MED right now, so. Yeah, it was probably yesterday. But I do think naturally we will be more attentive to some of these things as they come through, and I guess this was in November, so.
This application was initiated, I think the application was filed in August or September.
Okay.
It was at the, kind of the-
I don't disagree with what you're saying, I just think-
I recognize that it would be grandfathered in under anything that we talked about. That really is separate from the-
I understand.
Whether or not we think this is the appropriate place to have-
Yeah, I understand.
... density that's above a number that we do know and have known.
It'd be nice if somebody had a PowerPoint presentation on this.
I think I know what-
That might be helpful.
So, that's correct. The PRD with lots less than 10,000 square foot, or the new resolution is seven units per acre. So they're grandfathered in, and they're within the density based on their zoning and their plan. But you're right, yes. So the future land use map that is being, there's a proportion, right? So 11% of the future developable land out there needs to be seven units or less, and I gave you a wrong number, 40% needs to be three units or less. And we have multifamily around 3%, that's the nine units per acre. So when they create the future land use map, those proportions or those percentages need to be maintained on that future land. So as a tool and a guide for everyone to use, and you then will know, if I take a certain area that's shaded in the low-density, and somebody comes in and says, "Hey, I want four instead of three," then you know, hey, the balance is upset, and you're gonna have to recalibrate, you're gonna have to find that elsewhere. You know, if you're gonna give them four and these three, then you're gonna have to find somebody else that's gonna be willing to come too. So that future land use map is gonna be integral to decision-making moving forward. And that's in process right now with Reagan Smith. Does that make sense? So the ordinance is passed and the resolution's passed, but you need a tool, and that's that future land use map.
Can I ask you one more question? Do you have a concept, or Matthew, of what, of our current inventory, so to speak, of land? About what percentage are we at RS-10 or RS-15?
I'm working on that. That's my homework that I've been working, because we said we have about 27,000 units available capacity at the plant. That 27,000, we know that we've booked or we have committed, for instance, this. We've gotta take what you approve here, and we gotta start deducting that from that 27,000. So we've got some paper committed, single-family units that aren't built but are on the book. So we have to get that inventory to get to the real number of what's really available.
Can you, the RM zoning, I don't even remember what the RM zoning-
For the county?
Yeah, that's a county zoning, right?
It looks like just single-family houses.
Yes, residential medium density residential, residential medium density, it's basically their equivalent of RS-15, which is that their standard lot size if it's not in a PRD.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, this reminds me a lot of Asbury Lane two or three weeks ago. And, you know, I think the development itself, you have RS-10 all the way around it. And I get that there's, you know, from the way that you've got the Blue Line stream that runs through there, you're having to pick up density to be able to equate for that development cost. But, you know, at some point, and I'm not sure how we quantify that, for example, we said RS-10 on this piece of property. So you basically could have gotten, what, 80 units? Isn't that what we said, 80 units? But you're not getting 80-
In RS-10, I would estimate 55 to 60 with the constraints. The 81 comes from recommendations of the 2035 plan, which is at 3.54 dwelling units per acre, which equates to 81 units on this property.
So I mean, the question I think the council's gonna have to make, and this is really more of an overall question, we just built a $45 million school less than a mile away from here, or mile and a half, that we've already got 800 students in that school right now? So when we make these decisions to increase the density on a piece of property that's RS-10 all the way around it, and we're going from 50 units to 90 units, then you're not only looking at bringing in 40 more homes, you're looking at possibly bringing in the number that we've always been told is two-point, some odd unit, or you're bringing in two kids per X number of units. So, I mean, we're gonna have to start looking at when we make a determination of, when we make this decision and we're adding 40 more units, then we're also adding that to the school that's a mile down the road. So, you know, I don't, it's not just one increase in 40 units. It's, this is what comes with that 40 units that we're looking at.
And I think that's the importance when we look at this, that every one of those units would have an impact fee added to it that we're not getting because we just haven't been able to get that study forward and get that ball rolling. Because, I mean, we all know that at some point the economy will slow, and there won't be much development going on, and there's no benefit to having an impact fee if we wait till everything's built out and there's no room to build anything and say, "Well, we got an impact fee now." Because I think this is driving home the importance of why we need to go ahead and- go ahead and speed the process up as any way that's possible, and I know that, you know, the conversations I've had in the last week or so, that they're doing all they can to, to gather that information, but...
Well, and I'm, you know, I'm not even really, I, I think you're right, from the impact fee standpoint, but, you know, that impact fee is gonna end up being a one-time...
It's a temporary, it's a one-time shot.
You know, so...
But at least they have to pay for the school.
I, I don't know where, from a staff standpoint, I'll just tell you where I'm gonna be moving forward, and I think, probably to reiterate, if we're increasing density on a piece of property that we've said, here's what we anticipated, there needs to be a pretty dang good reason on why we're, we're increasing that density. So we're going from, you know, RS-ten and fifty units, to a PUD with, with ninety-five units, so we're, we're basically almost doubling the density, and, you know, I mean, I, I get what, what, you know, what your proposal is, a good development, but, you know, again, what I'm trying to look at is, what's the benefit to the city to increase fifty units on a piece of property, besides we're already gonna put a strain on our infrastructure that we already have in place, that we know, after building a forty million dollar school down the road, we're doubling the amount of, of people who are gonna be coming to that school, so I...
And, and like Mr. Alcorn says, I mean, this, it's, it's not an age-restricted community, but if it's, but if his market research holds true, it could potentially have less of an impact on the schools than, than...
So we also hear that these are the new starter home, though. I mean, so which is it? You know, I don't want it to be an argument that it's, this is the new starter home, and this is what the affordable housing is for new families, when it's appro, you know, when it's... Supporting that argument, and then, oh, well, this is probably gonna be people without kids, when it supports that argument, you know, I mean, I, I don't...
That's not, I, I, I know we're...
I'm not talking about you, I'm talking about that comes from different sources.
Right, right.
Right, okay, yeah, sorry, but, at different sources.
Yeah, I was just gonna say the same thing, I mean, I, and again, this is not, I, I'm probably sensitive to this, just so the develop, you know, Mr. Alcorn knows, we had this discussion, or I, I felt like with Asbury Lane, that there needs to be a good reason why that we're increasing density on a piece of property, and on Asbury Lane, although that was just a, we went from, I think it was fifty-two units that was on that piece of property, and it was shown that it could have thirty-five, I think we were increasing it, maybe...
I think it was thirty, I thought it was thirty units.
Well, so I mean, I, I'll ask you, Mr. Bonneman, not to put you on the spot, especially 'cause you're an Auburn fan, what's the benefit to the city of giving fifty additional units on, on this property, or doubling it? I mean, I guess I'm asking staff, I mean, what's the benefit? What, what, besides, sure, we get the sales tax revenue of construction going on, but, I mean, long-term, what's our benefit of putting fifty more units on a piece of property that we only anticipated was gonna have fifty, you know, fifty-five units on there, so you're adding forty, forty units? So it's, you know, it's an eighty percent increase from what we initially thought was gonna go there. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that's a good question, I don't know that I can articulate an answer to that.
And I'm not trying to put you on the spot, Mr. Bonneman, and by all means, we're not, we're not trying to shoot the messenger.
Sure, sure, yeah, you know, it was, it was an application that we processed, I think, one thing that I would mention, and I'm not, and I'm not speaking in favor of or against the application, the Asbury Lane, I know that a lot of the, the conversation about that had to do with, with access and, and transportation, this, this is a much better-positioned property for access and transportation.
Absolutely.
So, but as far as, as far as broader, broader benefit to the city, I don't, I don't know that I could answer that question.
And, and again, two separate pieces of property, and I'm not trying to be grouchy 'cause it's ten oh five, but at some point, we're gonna have to, either as a council, or relay back to the planning commission, and, and I'm even taking the sewer capacity aside, if a property is owned RS-ten, and, and that's what we say we feel like that that property's gonna be, this property's all surrounded by RS-ten, there's no other development like this, then there's consequences that come when we increase the density to the level that we're increasing the density to. That's, that's just my, my point, so...
I'll make the same comment I made about Asbury Lane. If we can get this number down, you know, I think, I, I said at Asbury Lane, you know, look, if, if that number was coming in, it, you know, a certain number, I feel like that would be more along the lines of, we're still working towards achieving this goal of, of getting there, you know, I think, I think the number has to get to more like eighty. I just did something wrong, hold on. To be at about a three and a half units per acre, which is more than three, but maybe more comfortable until we have the, the future land use map in place for me. So that's, that's probably where I'll leave that.
And just to update you, Mr. Lance, on the future land use map, we have our kickoff meeting with Reagan Smith scheduled for the first week of January, so we do aim to get moving on that full speed ahead when the new year starts.
If I had to, if I had to be a little more specific about that, that fifteen units would probably come from right there around that low spot, so we minimize the impact of the neighbors and the potential of making a little bit of a calculation error on the, on the drainage, and, and end up with another situation where we got drainage problems.
Matthew, I'll just tell you where, where I'm gonna be moving forward. If we're gonna increase density greater than maybe, I don't know, fifteen or twenty percent on a project, then there needs to be a really good reason why we're increasing the density on that, on a piece of property, to substantially change that, and there may be, someone may come in and say, hey, here's what we have here, here's what we're offering, I mean, here's, here's, you know, what I, what I see, I mean, like, I look at this cul-de-sac, and I see like forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, and forty-eight, where you sort of have the serpentine driveways to try to get to the units, and I mean, that, that's, it's just getting as, I get it, getting as much yield as you can, and, and I understand that, but where I'm gonna be moving forward, if we're changing the zoning on a piece of property to a planned development, and we're substantially increasing that density, we need to have a pretty dang good reason why we're doing that, and that there's a substantial benefit to the city to be able to do that. You know, there's something that we're doing different, and, and in an area where there's not anything that's this dense, that's surrounding it, then it, sometimes you look at it, it just doesn't, to me, that benefit's not there, so... And I think that may be, I wanna re, I think we do need to have that joint meeting with the planning commission at some point, so we can have these discussions as two bodies to understand why that we're having to see these things in, in, in that, that manner, so...
Mayor, has my time expired, or can I answer some of the questions?
No, we've got the, yeah, we've got the public comments closed, I mean, the hearings closed, but you're welcome to, to give...
Okay, thank you. We worked hard on this property, and it, and it got delayed to this month, just because of some, we had a hundred and four units at one point, and then brought it down to the ninety-five. To answer a few of the questions, we're also doing the River Downs that connects to this, and the Hayden Cove, which is adjacent to it as well, which those two products are under the three per acre. The question of what value does it bring to the city, that, that could have ten different answers, and, and, you know, to each, each's opinion. This project has its challenges because of Blue Line Stream, and as you mentioned, the city did look at this for a zoning change for a school versus the RS-ten that it currently has, and because of those challenges, it maybe moved away from it. We took the extra time in our delay, we had our neighborhood meeting in August, the reason we're here is we took some extra flood study time to make sure we addressed the problems, that this property already sits in the city, with a zoning that was kind of blanketed without a plan after the two thousand and seven and two thousand and eight changes in, in this region. We've come through with a, a, there is a problem of that water that drains into other people's. What we're presenting with this is a way to change that plan, to correct that problem. The expense of all of that does also lend itself to a, a design that's efficient. To go back to the RS-ten, I don't think that we'll ever see this property developed. The infrastructure for the school, which I know y'all are well aware of all that, but with this demographic, and these homes are not a starter home, they're above three hundred thousand, they're set plan, they're set design, it is geared for that fifty-five and over. We've done, like what we've done in the retreat, there was fifty-five houses in there, small lots, one child in fifty-four houses, and it was, but, it was driven to a private school, no, no impact. I don't, obviously, we can't control the impact, but we also know fifty-five houses that can be family-owned with no limit to children, the impact could be greater at fifty-five than, than this plan. Also to the staffs, there's two projects that we have recently gone through the due diligence, got to the next level before submitting, and because of the comments that were made today, was also made clear to us from the staff, and, and I remember the first meeting, I said, so are you saying from due diligence to now, you've changed? And they said, well, the council's opinion is, and, and my response, and they would know this, I said, so I do not have staff's approval, if I don't, if I don't have staff's confidence, I'm not gonna take it to the council. We withdrew those two projects. This one was so far down the pike, the reason it wasn't here six weeks ago, was just to do some more flood study.
Yeah.
We just asked that you consider all those items.
Appreciate that, damn right. Matthew, I hope, I, I don't want y'all to take that we're, we're beating up staff, I know y'all have heard us say this, but, you know, after all of us sat through what we sat through back in, in May, June, and July, and even to some extent, what we're hearing, I mean, the number forty percent is ingrained in my brain right now, anytime I hear that number on what we raised, property taxes had to go to, that's where these things are, are tough for us to look at.
Mayor McFarland, and I appreciate Mr. Alcorn mentioning that, 'cause we've, we've had a lot of unhappy people leave our due diligence meetings, 'cause we, we have, we as staff have held the line, we heard mayor and council loud and clear a month or two ago, and, and we have held the line and tried to do our best to, to honor the vision of the mayor and council.
And Matthew, I think I can speak for everyone here, we appreciate that, I absolutely appreciate it.
What's the timeline before Reagan Smith is done?
We're having our kickoff meeting first week of January, they estimate that it's about a six to eight-month process, of course, it'll require a planning commission at public hea, at, at, or a public hearing at planning commission, it's late, I'm sorry, as you all know, and, but, I, I would, I would think that we'd probably be looking more towards the end of twenty-twenty, after we, after they complete their study, do all their public outreach, have our planning commission public hearing, so I'm, I'm thinking probably fall of next year.
Thank you.
All right, any other discussion?
So if, so if that's the case, Mayor, are we still gonna continue to have some of these same situations, because some of these people are grandfathered in? We're gonna continue to have these issues, so what, what do we do from this point on? Because you can't have planning approving it, then it gets to council, and it gets, kicks back, that's, that's, we can't, we can't continue to go down that route, and I think that's the route that we're gonna continue to see. If they're saying it's gonna take another eight to nine months, we're gonna, we're gonna be back in this same boat next, next month.
Well, what's gonna end up happening, I'm afraid, and the reason I brought it up the way I did, is if we, if we do proceed kinda as we have been for the last year, even with the new allocation numbers, you know, the, the density numbers on the allocation, we're gonna have to redo that in a year and drop them further, because we're gonna be going over three point eight for the whole next year, this next two thousand doors that comes in, in twenty-twenty. So I mean, that, that's why I kinda brought it up the way I did, is we gotta start addressing this some, at some point or another. I don't see necessarily, I mean, I, I don't see necessarily the benefit to the city in why we would take the risk of being over, at the very worst, the three point eight number, and preferably for me, to get to more like a three or three and a half number, so that we're, we still have some flexibility. That's, like I said, I mean, you know, look, I, I think the three point eight number is the number that I gave, it was eighty units. I mean, I, I'm more comfortable making sure we're staying close to that three point eight number, because I know if we do that for a year, we won't have to come right back a year from now and readjust the allocation numbers on the sewer allocation downward, again. 'Cause if we're, if we come in and build four, two, two thousand units at five units an acre, we just spent ten percent of our allocation that we got left at five units per acre, which means we're gonna have to reduce the three point eight down to three point four, or three point five. So I, I, you know, I, I think my take is, Kurt, on what to do about it, is we gotta make sure we're taking into account every, every development we get, and we need to be as close to three point eight on average, if we have somebody who comes in at four point seven, we're gonna have to hope that Matthew and the folks over there have something in the pipeline for three to match it up with. I mean, I, it's the only thing I know to do. You know, a new road, a built, you know, a new e, exit out to the, to the highway, those things will make big differences to the city, to the, you know, to the development, and that's just not gonna be the case here.
But I think what, what I'm trying to say is, we, we, we need to have some kind of policy in place now, because right now, we're just winging it. You can't say, you can't just have...
A little bit.
That's basically what we're doing. How long can you wing it? Because we're gonna continue to have the same issues. Staff's gotta be given direction on what to do, as staff portrays it to planning, planning's gotta know what to do, and then when it gets to council, it should be handled, we shouldn't be talking about this right now, it should've been already handled.
Well, we're working on it, you know, I mean, it took, took a while to get there, and then working on it.
I'm not disputing that, I'm just, I'm just saying, we have, if, if not, this is gonna be coming, coming back up. We're telling developers, go out here, develop a project, and then we, we, we not approve it.
Well, and also...
Especially when it's grandfathered in.
Do, do we know, is there, I guess, from an exposure standpoint, do we know how much of this could be in the pipeline that is kinda in between, maybe some changing tides associated with flexibility on this? I mean, do you have a feel for that?
As far as, as far as rezonings coming down the pipeline? As far as rezonings coming down the pipeline, Ms. Martin?
Well, that's meaning that's been through planning, but it's not made its way to council yet.
Yeah, so, so of course, there's Hidden River coming up, which I think is, I wanna say between five and six units per acre, and that's coming for a public hearing on January the ninth. We've got, I'm trying to think of the ones that I'll be asking you to schedule later on tonight. Now, the ones that we're scheduling later on tonight, there are two, two commercials and one that's for, one that's for an RS-four zone, just for a very small lot downtown, which, in the CCO, which would be exempt from, exempt from the sewer allocation ordinance.
So I guess my point being, this is probably outside of what you're, Hidden River, this is probably the only one that we're really looking at, that has yet to be brought to planning, in order to be able to have some of that discussion and planning before it gets here.
I think that's correct.
Yeah, I don't, I don't disagree with anything that's been said, I mean, I, but I do feel some sense of responsibility. I do feel some sense of responsibility, just from the standpoint that it's been through planning, and so, I, I know we've made a commitment, you know, both from a new land order, zoning map, as well as the sewer allocation, but I, I supported it in planning, and I'm willing to support it here as well, because of that, with the knowledge that we're going to try to make sure we make adjustments moving forward, so. If there are other comments, I'll wait, but I'll, I'll be willing to make a motion to approve, as presented.
We have a motion?
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
No.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
And I, I want to make a comment, Dan, and y'all's team, y'all, y'all do some really nice stuff. I've seen your stuff over in Marymont. My, my vote does not have merit on what you will build there. Even if this were, we were not having the sewer allocation in place, and we were not dealing with, I still wouldn't vote for a 40% increase in density on, on the piece of property. So I'm not, I'm not voting against y'all's property, I want y'all to know that, because I think y'all do good work. I, I'm just, it's too dense for me, but. All right, that passes, we'll move to amending the City Corps overlay district.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. Our next public hearing is a long time in the making, beginning with Mr. Anthony, back during his tenure here, actually, beginning with Mr. Aidot, and, and his tenure here back in 2013, when we adopted the City Corps overlay district regulations, and the City Corps overlay district, the initial boundaries that were adopted back in 2013, which are still in existence today, it was the hope at that time that it would spur on some redevelopment, and, not only redevelopment, but make development more consistent with the urban form downtown. It's been successful in some regards, with respect especially to building setbacks, as, as Habitat and private individuals have, have built new homes downtown, those homes are allowed to be built compatibly with the homes around it, rather than, than sticking back so far. So it's, it's had some very positive impacts, I think. But we knew back in 2013 that, that, that it was not going to be the final form, that the regulations or the district boundaries were going to be in. We knew that we would be revisiting that at some point, and so, back in 2015, 2016, the city undertook the historic bottoms and North Island Avenue planning studies, because coming out of the recession, we saw that the interest in downtown development, development and downtown redevelopment was increasing, and we wanted to put the tools in place so that, that is, it was quality development that was compatible and consistent with the, the urban form of the downtown. So after the two planning studies were adopted, staff undertook the, the drafting of the ordinance amendment, made a few changes, kept some of the, some of the same regulations in place with regard to setbacks, but really tried to, to give some other relief, and also increase the size of the boundaries, which will be the subject of the, of the next public hearing. When we initially took this to the, to the planning commission, there were some misgivings about the, just kind of the breadth and the complicated nature of the, of the ordinance. Mr. Anthony, before his departure, worked hard on, on really paring that, the ordinance down, taking it from about 50 to 12 pages, so really, making it less complicated, getting rid of a bunch of sub-districts that each had their own regulations, and making it a uniform document that would apply throughout the, through the entire district. So what I think we have is a document that will help enable quality development and redevelopment within the, the City Corps overlay district. This goes hand in hand with the, with the next public hearing, which is the enlargement of the boundaries of the City Corps overlay district. We did have several, several public outreach events, and there was opportunities for the public to come and give their feedback, and we, and we appreciated those opportunities. Planning Commission did conduct a public hearing on the ordinance amendment, and voted to recommend its approval to the city council. I'll be happy to answer any questions either before or after the public hearing on the ordinance amendment. If approved, this would supersede the existing, supersede and replace the existing City Corps overlay district regulations that are in the zoning ordinance right now.
Matthew, does this take place of the CBD, or is this in?
No, it's, the CBD is actually a base zoning district, the City Corps overlay district is an overlay zoning district.
Okay.
And so we have clauses in the, in the ordinance that say which takes precedence in given circumstances.
Okay, perfect. Anyone wishing to speak for or against the City Corps overlay district, please come to the lecture. All right, seen none, we'll consider on first reading, ordinance 19045.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
I'm going to abstain.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll move to item 22, establish City Corps overlay district for downtown Murfreesboro.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. This goes hand in hand with the last public hearing. We took the boundaries of the historic bottoms planning study and the North Island Avenue planning study, and included that in the proposed City Corps overlay district expansion. And what we also did was, another area that we're seeing interest in redevelopment is kind of the North Maple, North Church, North Spring areas, those areas were not included in either of the planning studies, but they have been included in the City Corps overlay, the proposed City Corps overlay district expansion, because we have seen quite a bit of interest in those areas as well. And so, so what this does is it, it, the existing City Corps overlay district is basically south of East Vine Street, stretching down to Mercury Boulevard, and it's east of the central business district, so it doesn't take in the existing square and central business district. This does take in those areas, as well as the areas to the north of the square, as those areas, as most of those areas were what were included in those, in those planning studies. So this is really kind of the, an implementation piece to the planning studies that were conducted. And those boundaries for those planning studies were, were developed after, after public input sessions and brainstorming by our consultant Reagan Smith, with our staff and with the public, and so, we feel that this is, this is, based on that public feedback during those processes, the, where the boundaries for the City Corps overlay district should be, and where we've been seeing interest in, in redevelopment. I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing. Planning Commission did vote to recommend the approval of this expansion of the CCO.
Thank you, Mr. Blomley. Anyone wishing to speak for, against the CCO, I guess we'd call it the CCOD for downtown Murfreesboro, please come to the podium. Seen none, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll consider passing on first reading, ordinance 19OZ46.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Blomley. I know that's been a lot of hard work for, for all of y'all.
We appreciate y'all's support on that.
We'll move to the mandatory, mandatory referral for abandonment of Williams Drive right-of-way planning.
Yes, sir, this is a, this is about the tiniest right-of-way abandonment that I've ever brought before y'all. This is just a small sliver of right-of-way, of Williams Drive, which is in the Gateway Design Overlay District Number Three. Volunteer Behavioral Health had a site plan approved for the property that is just to the north of this, of this property, and this was deemed as excess right-of-way, and there are four conditions listed in the, in the council communication to you, if you'd like, I can read those, or, but we would recommend that any approval of this be made subject to those four conditions. Planning Commission did conduct a public hearing on this right-of-way abandonment, and does recommend its approval. Be happy to answer any questions.
Matthew, I, I apologize, I'm going to back up one item. I want to thank you personally for the phenomenal job that Donald Anthony did of making the City Corps overlay much, much better, and much more understandable, as well as the phenomenal job that the staff did in presenting that to the public through the public meetings, and just, the process went extremely well, and I, and I think it was received very well, and I think that's reflected in the fact that nobody was here tonight in opposition to it. And this is probably the smallest abandonment we've ever made, and we'll probably do it again on a couple of other corners, but the, it's, it's a good proposal, and I move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Blomley. I want to go on record, I think you deserve all the credit, so, people who are here get credit, right?
Well, I, I appreciate it, and, and Mr. Anthony did put a lot of hard work into that, so I, I appreciate all the effort that he put into it.
All right, what, what recommendations do you have for us to schedule public hearings?
We've got four public hearings to schedule. We believe that these can be handled in one night. I would throw out the date of February the 6th as a possible date, that's the first Thursday of February, and we traditionally meet on the first Thursday, but that's just a, a date for your consideration.
We have a motion?
Yes.
Second.
We have a motion is second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Yes.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll move to on motion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blomley. We have Robert Rose Right Turn Lane project.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a project to add a right turn lane at Robert Rose at Thompson Lane. We opened bids on November 14th of this year, a low bid in the amount of $1,208,196 was submitted by Bell and Associates. They've done several projects successfully in the, in the city. Their bid was less than engineer's estimate, and was also within the budgeted amount. With that, I'll be, our, I'll be happy to answer any questions, but we would recommend approval of Bell and Associates to begin construction after, after the first of the year, all the holiday traffic's gone.
It's just one of the intersections that was recognized as a hot spot.
That's very, it's a good memory.
If, if this can do as well as the intersection improvements that were done at Robert Rose and Casey Lane, where they intersect, that, it'll be wonderful.
Is that in the form of a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
I would now have construction administration for Robert, Robert Rose Right Turn Lane.
Yes, ELI completed the design on this, we just asked them to, to finish up the construction administration on it. Their estimate is for $39,150, and that, again, is within the budgeted amount of the city's CIP. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions, recommend approval.
Move.
Motion is second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Grifith. All right, we have the overall creek pump station design task order from SSR Water Resources.
Mayor, city council, thank you for the opportunity, I'll be, last couple of items on the agenda. Overall creek pump station, you all probably know it fairly well, we, the one here on Broad Street, across, real close to Singer Road, it is in need for an upgrade. We have done a study, I think, back in April of this year, to see, to, to do a capacity study. It was determined to be in need of an upgrade. In effect, this is a planned view of the pump station, what we would effectively do is just mirror that, so we're, we're doubling the capacity of it. This would also include upgrading a 24-inch force main, that is about 17,500 linear feet.
Wow.
That is going to parallel an existing 14- and 18-inch force main. The overall budget is around 12.4. What we're asking for tonight is the approval for engineering task order with Smith, Sekman, Reed, in the amount of $864,070, that's roughly 7% of the total project cost, and this did go before the Water Resources Board, and they recommended approval. Some available for questions?
What's the 10% mean?
Oh, 10%, I think, I don't know, that's wrong.
Any-
Yeah, you're right, yeah, you know.
Any other questions?
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Temporary flow monitoring and monitor upgrades, Mr. Gore.
Yes, sir. So this is a, another, we have a master services agreement with ADS, they maintain all of our permanent flow monitors in the system, this is kind of a map of, of our watersheds, our basins, and these are sanitary sewer flow monitors that gauge the, the average daily flows, and they also gauge the flows when we have peak rain events, or if we have wet weather flows. So what we do, customarily, we have a $300,000 budgeted, we go in and we do temporary flow monitoring, and these are areas that we've identified as potential problems, again, that we may have density issues where flows are going in, or we've got repairs necessary to eliminate the INI. There's three areas here, kind of shown around town. This would require an additional $69,000 above, it'll, it'll come out of our working capital reserves, but it would be above the 300,000 that's budgeted, so we're requesting for that additional 69,000 to conduct these temporary flow monitor studies. Available for questions?
I'll move for approval if there aren't any.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. You have-
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gore. Looks like we have a couple of care permits.
We do, Mayor. We have an ownership change at 5524 Northwest Broad Street, that's a grocery market, and that application is in order, they have finished their building codes inspection, so we could issue that permit if you approve it. We also have a new owner for a restaurant within the MC Suites, apparently it's the same owners, but they've changed the way they're structured, so it's considered an ownership, ownership change, and that application is also in order, and we can issue that one once they finish rebuilding codes inspections. Be glad to try to answer any questions.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, I have one recommendation, Mr. Greg McKnight was on the PBA, but took a job with the city, and can no longer be on the PBA, so the recommendation of Paul Myers is, you know, his vacancy.
No for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris. Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Any other business?
No, sir.
All right, thank you, everyone, for working so hard tonight. We appreciate everyone. Say, yes?
I'm going to say to my fellow council members.
Hold on a second. We're still, we're still going on. Hold on.
I appreciate it tonight, all right? I mean, this is a, this is a heavy-duty decision, and I thought, I think the functioning of the council is outstanding tonight, and appreciate the heck out of y'all, okay?
Craig, one quick question before we, we leave. I was, I was just seeing in the Murfreesboro Post, Gary, I know this may go to you, that I guess Rutherford County is going to be coming to the city to talk about that piece of property, so if you could please update all the council members as you guys start having those discussions, you could keep us involved in all that.
Will do.
All right. Merry Christmas. We'll stand adjourned.